Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and for all those who died in our community recently. Particularly, the Reverend Cashin Yuhaus, CP, beloved brother, uncle, great uncle, former rector of St. Anne's Monastery and Basilica, who offered the invocation and benediction during the 2004 swearing-in ceremony of Scranton City Council. And dear friend to my late parents, Robert D. Walsh, loving son, brother, grandson, nephew, and my former student. Seal D. Hughes, devoted mother of our friend Bill, grandmother and aunt. Ann Rose Halpin, beloved mother of our friend Grace, grandmother, great-grandmother and sister. Jack Irwin Davis Sr., loving husband, father, grandfather, great-grandfather, and 25-year veteran of the Scranton Fire Department. Lanell Blackwell, devoted mother of Scranton OECD employee Fania, grandmother, sister and aunt. Midge Lee, beloved mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, sister, aunt, and mother-in-law of our friend Carolyn, and their dear families and many friends who suffer their loss. Also, please keep in your prayers Dr. Michael Riley, who underwent surgery today. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. Dispense with the reading of the minutes, please.
Third order, 3A, comparison of city funds distributed in 2012 and 2013 from the single tax office.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Meeting held January 23, 2013.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C, minutes of the composite pension board's regular meeting held January 23, 2013.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do we have any clerk's notes tonight?
No, Mrs. Evans.
Thank you, Mrs. Crake. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
I would just like to mention with the parade coming up, I'd hope that everyone tries to remain safe. Don't drink and drive, and enjoy yourself downtown for the parade and many festivities throughout the city, both this weekend for actual St. Patrick's Day coming up, if that's all.
Is there anyone else? Councilman McGough is unable to attend tonight's meeting. The Lou Rusby Jr. Foundation and State Representative Frank Farina will conduct the First Annual Breakfast of Hope on Sunday, March 17, 2013, beginning with registration at 9:30 a.m. at Rossi's Restaurante, 1501 Main Street in Archibald. Tickets are $17 for adults, $12 for children aged 4 to 12, and free for children 3 and under. Advanced ticket purchase is highly recommended. Contact Carla Farina at (570) 687-3500, or Teresa Stan at (570) 840-2680. The LRJ Foundation is dedicated to hope, guidance, and education for suicide prevention and mental health awareness, and supplies schools in Lackawanna, Wayne, and Pike Counties with educational teaching packets on suicide prevention for staff and students. Please support this very worthy endeavor. And finally, I'd like to recognize the officers of the Scranton Region of the Antique Automobile Club of America, particularly its president and our good friend Michael Pacero, the family of the late James Cleese, dedicated former Scranton Police Chief, as well as Acting Police Chief Carl Graziano, and the members of the Scranton Police Department, of whom we are so very proud. To my great regret, I was unable to attend last week's presentation of the Chief James Cleese Memorial Plaque by Mr. Pacero and the outstanding Antique Auto Club that Jim Cleese so loved and helped to establish. And so tonight, I'd like to say to his dear children and family members, Jimmy was a dedicated public servant and a remarkable, irreplaceable gentleman who remains well-loved, admired, and respected by all he knew, served, and protected. Many thanks to Mr. Pacero, Chief Graziano, and Chief Cleese's daughters for sharing this special occasion with our community. And that's it.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Ron Elman.
Yeah, thank you, council.
Good evening.
I'm glad to see a couple of you feeling better.
Thank you.
I realize that many people in Scranton don't watch this program because the subject matter means nothing to them, but plenty of others want to be informed. The subject matter I'm speaking of clearly monitors our lives. It affects the way we vote sometimes. You know, for instance, I'm talking about this gun situation that everybody I've talked to seems to think it was a lot more serious than the District Attorney's Office did. I've heard a dozen or 15 people say it just looks like gross favoritism was showing here. An average person wouldn't get such a liberal outcome. I won't keep harping on this, but this wasn't handled right. It just looked like it was swept under the rug, a cover-up of a cock-and-bull story to people. You know, this city government, if I could call it that, it reminds me of... Like when I watch these Robin Hood movies, the king tells the sheriff of Nottingham, "The peasants aren't paying enough taxes. They're not taxed enough. Go tax them." See, Hester's leaving town, raise the taxes. Whatever's done, that's all that we hear, raise the taxes. The developers have cheated us people out of building permits year after year. Nothing's done, just raise the taxes to cover it. The SPA needs $10 billion for the garages. Instead of closing two of them, which is the simple, best thing to do, is raise the taxes so we can repair the garages. A hundred-dollar-a-year man, an hour man, sitting there babysitting for $40,000 a year doesn't see that there's half the income coming in. Who's supposed to suffer the loss? You know, it'd be the same thing, raise the taxes. The majority of people in the city are paying 60% of the taxes for the schools and don't use them. I don't use them. I haven't used them for 30 or 40 years. This is, you've just... There's got to be a better solution than just borrowing and raising taxes every time we turn around. You know, I realize councils had 10 years of gross incompetence and mismanagement from the Dougherty administration. Besides bankruptcy, I don't know what else to advocate. But you cannot keep punishing people that have property like this. These non-profits have destroyed our tax base, and it's shrinking and shrinking all around us. You know, I go out here and I talk to somebody at the grocery store and here and there. I talk, like I've mentioned, I talk to a lot of professional people. They just washed up with the city. It seems like people aren't thinking of the future of this city. You're a teacher. You've got... Where are these children supposed to go in 10 or 15 years when they inherit like a half a billion dollars' worth of bills and so forth? That's where we are. Something's got to be done besides borrow and raise taxes. It's just, it's just, it's just reached... We're not getting nothing for our money. You know, I keep telling you, I can't walk down the street because people park on the sidewalk. Every place, I don't have no curbs. My flood yards, nothing's ever repaired. Now, my taxes are twice what they were when I bought the house. There's just got to be a better solution. And I hope one of our new political people come for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ozzy Quinn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ozzy Quinn, Scranton Taxpayers Association, corporate. First, I want to give a commercial that the Taxpayers Association... Thank you, Frank, for announcing this last week. I know Jack was sick. That the... We held our meeting on Tuesday, and if you Google ECTV, you'll find out the date and the time of when this is going to be replayed. It's very interesting because Representative Kevin Hagerty attended. He was the guest, and he spoke about the many issues prevalent today in the city and statewide. And I think it was a good meeting. Next two things I'm asking you, the first one I'm asking you to consider seriously. The last one I want to ask you to consider as much as you can, okay, to enact. The first one is that it came... I have come to the conclusion that with everything being shot down that you're trying to do, okay, in regards to various, to pay off the debt we all, that we have to have a meeting with the state representatives, I mean, the council and the mayor. The state representatives and the state senator. The only way I can see is getting bailed out in this situation is we don't want to go through what's a bankruptcy. But the state, the state is the ones that put the albatross around our neck 21 years ago, and they should be able to sit down and talk about this intelligently and try to help the city with their finances, be it a no-interest loan, or grant, or whatever, or a combination. I ask you to consider that. The other thing I urge you to consider, and that is to ask the District Attorney to do an investigation of Scranton's OECD. What I mean is this here, and all due respect, Mr. Hogan, this has nothing to do with reflection on you. This is before you came here. You've been reading off various loans that were paid off, various loans that people are behind on, don't know where they're going with them. And tonight, you're supposed to read off another list of deadbeats, okay? If you take that list, those three lists, and take the names over and get the Dougherty campaign finance books, okay, and compare who got the loan, who gave large donations to Mr. Dougherty, you're going to see that they match. That's collusion in my books. That is unequivocally collusion. It's this Tannamout is going and saying, you know, "I'll give you $500 if you give me the what's-him, if you give me this bid, if you give me something, or you give me a job, you give my cousin a job." And this is what happened. And the DA is sitting down there. He knows, and he knows that there's things going on. I've asked him, but he just don't even answer with a letter or reply. Why? Mostly because the DA is so political, it's unbelievable. I don't think that's going to help me very much if I get arrested. But I really hope that... And I know, Mr. Hogan, that you just came on board with the OECD two years, and you are... But, you know, a lot of the audit that has $11 million missing, and I mean that the city has to come up with $11 million of non-federal funds, a lot of that audit has to do with these loans and grants that you're talking about. And the fact that they weren't eligible for these loans and grants. And I don't know if you realize that, and I don't know if anybody realizes that. I realize it because I've been looking into it. And they tell me in Washington that they did not meet the criteria of meeting low-income jobs, things like that, any criteria that you have to get along. So, I mean, it's serious. It's a mess. Now, anybody, you had to wait how long for this list? Now, if you're in... And I know, they have Excel programs down there. If I'm having Excel program on my computer, which they should have, I would take that loan, and I would put it in there, and I put it in a number of years, and if there's any interest, and I would just be able to, every payment, I'd be able to see who pays every week or every month, or whatever the payment may be, what it's reduced to, and find out what the balance is. And I could do that for you, I should be able to do that for you in five minutes. Not three weeks, and we're still waiting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just add to what Mr. Quinn said with regard to the request for that loan portfolio. We waited over a year to get that response. And I think you had mentioned a meeting between council and state representatives. I can tell you that I've met a number of times with our state senator, John Blake, obviously to no avail. I know he's met with mayor as well. But I would not be adverse to asking State Representative... Yes, we can ask, that's fine. State Representative Hagerty and Flynn and Senator Blake to a public caucus to discuss the state of the city and what assistance the city or the state intends to extend to the city in 2013 and going forward as well. Thank you. So, Mrs. Crake, you would send letters, please, to those three gentlemen requesting that caucus for the purpose described. Our next speaker is Doug Miller.
Good evening, council. Doug Miller, Scranton. Just like to begin tonight...
Good evening.
...by discussing the motion, the request to have our state senators and representatives appear before council in the caucus. I do feel that if these elected leaders do have a sincere interest in moving the city forward and looking out for the taxpayers that they do represent, that they would not have any issue with coming forward here in a public setting, discussing the issues that the city currently faces. Certainly, at this point in time, the city faces tremendous challenges, and it requires all of our elected leaders to come together and find solutions to resolve these issues once and for all so that the city of Scranton does have a bright future. In regards to the parking garages, it was reported that they're in need of up to $10 million in repairs. Certainly not surprised by that. I know for quite some time that this just has been continuing to escalate, and that these parking garages have been in disrepair for many years now. We've had many issues with, you know, feces and other inappropriate paraphernalia, you know, homeless people taking shelter, a lot of issues that certainly have been brushed aside, and we haven't taken serious. My only question would be, and I think it's the most important question here, is where do we intend on coming up with any funding that may be necessary to repair these garages? Obviously, we can't let this slip under the cracks. If these garages do need repair, it's something we do need to take serious. But at the same time, a city that's strapped for cash certainly doesn't have $10 million to come up with. So I guess my question tonight would be is where do we intend on coming up with any necessary funding that we may need later on down the road?
In my opinion, there is no source for those repairs. Right now, the city is in a position where it certainly must prioritize. And in terms of the parking garages, the number-one priority is repayment of the bond issues. And I know that one payment is forthcoming in March, I believe, the 15th, and the city will be able to meet that. But there are additional payments coming around in June, September, and December, I believe. And it's imperative that the city meet those financial obligations. So there simply is no source of revenue for garage repairs at this time, and I don't see that forthcoming in the next year or two as well.
And it's also just my opinion and belief that there's probably going to be an issue later on with coming up with funding to make these bond payments as well. And I think that's a really alarming thing to look at, is that we're going to struggle to make these payments. And it's, once again, going to fall on the city's shoulders and certainly the taxpayers of this city. And that's why it's so important that we come up with a plan to address this. And I think, you know, for the last few weeks, we've discussed the idea with Standard Parking when they came in during that caucus and discussed, you know, a street meter program that allows us to generate more revenue. Whether it's increased rates, I know there were many concerns from businesses in the community, taxpayers as well. There was talks of, you know, Saturday operations, and certainly some of those questions still need to be addressed. But I think the further we continue to just kick this can down the road and allow this to not come into effect, I think we're certainly putting ourselves in a tough spot later on down the road. And obviously, the taxpayers are going to have to carry the load. And I know that this council is committed to putting a program together. You know, I appreciate all the businesses and the residents who've come forward and addressed concerns. But I also think they need to understand, as I've said before, that without any action taken, the burden is going to be placed on them. And I think these are things that we have to keep in mind, is do we want to look at additional tax increases to come up with the revenue? Or do we want to implement some sort of innovative plan that allows us to generate revenue so that we can meet these obligations, so that we can repair our garages? You know, it's pretty embarrassing that we don't... You know, it's, it's pretty embarrassing that we don't even have the money to repair our garages. I mean, we've certainly allowed ourselves to become a laughingstock, and we've made a mockery of ourselves because this administration has just ignored the essential priorities, and they've played a lot of politics, and have put us in a really difficult situation. I'd like to move on to a, another issue. It was brought to my attention that, this is a request that was made by a resident that I talked to. Apparently, a large pothole has formed on the Harrison Avenue Bridge, makes it a little difficult to get around, and certainly when you're, when you're trying to avoid it, you can be merging in oncoming traffic, and certainly an accident could be in the makes there. So perhaps we could maybe send a letter to Mr. Dewar, asking him to maybe take a look at it? I'd appreciate that. We talked tonight, it was brought up earlier, about regarding bankruptcy, and, you know, Mr. Elman talked about not wanting to punish the residents of this city, and I think while we want to stay on that subject about punishing, we need to understand one thing, that bankruptcy is the ultimate punishment. And I've been quite repetitive on this whole bankruptcy issue and my stance that I've taken against it, that I do not feel it's the solution to the city's problems, regardless of what others may want to say. If you think bankruptcy is just gonna overnight turn our problems around, you're wrong. It's not going to. We don't want to see any burdens placed on the taxpayers, but that will happen with a bankruptcy filing. The services that we take pride in every day, our police protection, our fire protection, our DPW, all those things that we may take for granted time and time again, we won't see, because they will be reduced with a bankruptcy. And I'm hopeful that in an effort to generate revenue and to alleviate the burden, it was brought up last week that we want to look into a public safety fee on nonprofits, and I'm hopeful that we're serious and will stay committed to doing that, because the taxpayers have been punished enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Carrera, if we could, please send a letter to Mr. Dewar regarding the pothole that Mr. Miller mentioned on Harrison Avenue. Thank you. Our next speaker is Les Spindler.
Good evening, council, Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer.
Good evening.
Nice to have you back, Mrs. Evans. I hope you're feeling better.
Thank you.
You know, I usually don't come up here and talk about other speakers, but as Doug says, week after week, Mr. Elman comes up here and complains about taxes, and the next breath, he says we should file for bankruptcy. Well, I told him before, I said, don't you realize if we have a receiver come in, you're complaining about taxes now, a receiver could come in and raise your taxes 125%, if not more. So it's, bankruptcy is not the answer if you're complaining about paying taxes. Moving on, just a quick question about the mayor's salary, it's gonna be $75,000 after four years. Will that be permanent?
Yes.
I'm going from that?
Yes.
Okay, good, I think that's a good idea. Unlike Mr. McGough's idea to put it back to $50,000. I thought that was wrong. Okay, thank you. We're talking about parking meters, and I've gone by here a bunch of times, the 700 block of Madison Avenue, it's the block up from the regional hospital, there are two apartment buildings there, and a single house, and there's meters in front of those buildings. I don't know why there would be meters in front of places where people are living. I know if I lived there, I'd be furious about that. These people have to pay to park in front of their houses? I think that's ridiculous.
We can look into that.
It's the 700 block of Madison.
Madison.
It's a, there's like, there's those two buildings, a private home, and then the Von Koch building is next to that, but why there's meters in front of residences is beyond me, and it's been that way for years. I can't believe these people haven't complained.
Perhaps they're not operating, do you know?
Maybe not.
But nevertheless, they can still be removed and placed elsewhere where they can be useful.
Okay, two weeks ago, Councilman Rogan commented about responses he got from Director Dewar, DPW. I guess it's safe to say none of them were from the response, requests I put in?
No, it was, it was nice to have that stack of about 10 responses, but I think there's probably a few hundred, or maybe 1,000 outstanding over the last
Well, the one request I did make back in November, the street sign where I live was stolen, two Mondays ago, that was replaced, in the corner of Bowler Street, North Rebecca Avenue. There's one problem, it's North Rebecca Avenue, and the sign that says North Rebecca Street. That's incorrect, the sign was made incorrectly, and I have these things in writing, I'll give them to Ms. Carrera when I go, so I don't know whoever made that sign, it's wrong. And another street sign, the corner of Price Street and North Lincoln, and I have that in writing. That sign has faded to the point where you can't even see it. So that's, that's like if, if an emergency vehicle's looking for that area, and I do have that written down. Lastly, article in the paper today about the DA finding no wrongdoing with Liz Randall, losing her, giving her gun to someone that lost it. Well, maybe that's not a crime, but to me, it shows a lack of responsibility and judgment. She gave her gun to somebody to clean, and this person had a shady background to begin with. If you're a gun owner, you should know where that gun is at all times, 24/7, and this gun was found on the street, thank God, no criminal found this gun and used it in a crime. And she wants to run our city, I don't think she has the judgment to run our city and bring us out of the terrible situation that we're in with our finances. Losing a gun is just, like I said, it's a lack of responsibility and judgment. If she wanted it cleaned, she should have taken it to a gun shop, have it done professionally. Don't give it to someone with a shady background. That's not someone I want running this city. That's all I have this week, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Spindler, thank you very much for presenting your requests in writing to, to our office. I appreciate, I appreciate the fact that you comply with the rules and requests made by council.
And I forgot to say, it's on there too, about the, my corridor, it's deteriorating more and more, hasn't been fixed. I know many requests have been sent in.
Yes. Thank you.
Maybe another one can be sent, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who cares to address council?
Andy Spriglet, citizens of Scranton, fellow Scrantonians. I noticed in your legislation C, I guess it's 5C, establishing of on-street parking requested by the hospital. Why would the hospital with three parking garage request on-street parking? And they did the study, of course, when they do a study, how is that study gonna turn out? I don't quite understand why they would want nine on-street parking spaces, and I expect if they get them, they will be metered. And that would be more of a slap in the face to them than anything else. I don't understand it. They got three garages, and yet they want on-street parking. You'll never know. Okay, we don't have much responsibility with the Scranton Lacoona Health and Welfare Authority, do we really?
No, no. I believe that the mayor makes appointments to that, that committee, but I know oftentimes the city or the county would be used as a pass-through for loans that they're obtaining for various organizations. So that's what's occurring on tonight's agenda, and the city, the city does not guarantee that
No, it's two and a half million, I just was worried about the authority. Who guarantees the authority?
I don't know.
I don't care what they do, is the question is, if they are guaranteeing loans, how does that reflect on the city? I know the people that get the loans are supposed to be responsible for the loans, but I just wondered how that works, because, you know, Lacoona College dug into that many, many times, that fund, and got money for them for various projects. And I just wondered, as they keep getting into these, you know, these projects, what is the legal responsibility of either Lacoona County or the city of Scranton, should any of these projects fall through, being that they were out there recommending it? I just wondered, it was a curiosity.
Would you like us to make that request of the authority for you, to respond?
Well, you could, it's for everybody in the city, in Lacoona County, it's not just for me. Should there be any way around the thing that we could be hip for some of these things that are being done, then I would like to know about it, and I would like council to know about it. In fact, it's more important for you to know about it than for me, because you're there for the future. I'm there at present, for how long, I don't know, but I'm here at present. But council will be there in the future, long after I'm in the ground. So the more they learn about anything with these different authorities, or anything that may even slip in, is a bonus. They should know it. Well, that's all I'm gonna talk about, there, everything else is fairly good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Craig, if we could send a letter to the organization or group, asking what their responsibility is in terms of the debt. I know that the city is not responsible. That is a matter of fact, but we certainly can ask what their responsibilities would Is there anyone else who, oh?
Good evening, Dave Dobson. I have some articles that I reprinted.
And if you'd state your name, please.
What's that?
State your name, please.
Oh, my name is Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton, taxes paid. Now, they're on economics, so it might be something that you're interested in, and it has something to do with the trade deficit and why government spending doesn't always help to increase, like, sorry, Pat, I ran out of ink, so if you're really hassling me when I get a new cartridge, or maybe somebody could pass it over.
I'll make a copy after the meeting.
What's that?
I'll make a copy after
All righty, thank you.
Thanks.
Now, I have two questions here, and I decided to be a gentleman and put them in writing for a change. Why did the county commissioners decline insurance consolidation of city and county consortium? And is it possible to study tax-exempt percentages and find ways of locking out further erosion of our tax base? And does it, does council think it's prudent to answer this question before we find even higher amounts of city properties become exempt? Currently, we're at 33%, and our hole in our budget is about 30, 33% of property taxes. If we had 150% of more property taxes, we wouldn't have a hole in the budget. So I'll give this to Ms. Carrera.
I know that we had already sent a letter to the commissioners regarding the issue of their declining to participate in a healthcare consortium. They have not responded as yet. With regard to the second issue, you know, it's unfortunate, but even the state seems to be taking increased measures. I know that our state senator, John Blake, is involved in this, taking increased measures to protect the
Right.
Nonprofits' standing of tax exempts. And also, you know, while we're on the top of the county, the county commissioners were not, now, not all three, but two of three, were not terribly interested in joining efforts with the city and the school district in terms of pursuing pilots from tax exempts. So it's a very difficult situation when you have elements of government that appear to be working against the citizens to the benefit of the nonprofit community.
We're about 30% of the population of the county, and so we have two to one lined up against us, but I think it would be interesting to look into the feasibility of a study. I've gotten involved with the taxpayer association again, and maybe we could get some legal advice on that, and it's almost a deal for the Supreme Court, because it's gone too far. Everybody's putting them here and just pay us, you know? And last week, there was an article on dead meters, and I noticed quite a few of them when I parked downtown, and Mr. Joyce commented on it, and I would say it was around the 14th of February, I think it was the second week of the meeting of February, that I parked in front of a dead meter, which I didn't owe anything at that time, but, you know, I noticed the whole row in front of Guild Studios was dead. And it's a shame that these corporations want us to trust them when they're doing such shoddy work. I mean, somebody, they're supposed to be taking care of it, and they're not. So how do we sign off on a, on a deal with them? I think they've undermined our trust quite a bit, and they have some answering to do. Lucy, you got some explaining to do. There's a low-cost neuter clinic, the number is 570-994-5846, it's EPAA, it's $60 for a cat, we have some terrible animal problems in the city, and some people are moving out of apartments, and they just push the cat out the door, non-neutered, and we have a problem. I'd like to express support for the current council, and I hope it'll remain similar. I hope you people rerun again, and I'm sorry for all the, all the harassment you've got out of the times and so forth, but we need you. Uncle Sam needs you. And also, I'd like to see, looked into, for the new mayor, a term limit of two terms, so we don't get any more entrenchment than we already have had. After, after the second term, I think whoever's in there kind of wears out there. Legislators are different, because you have people coming in and out, and they, there's nobody up there that has more than maybe 20% control of things anyway. And the golden parrot goes to Congress. Now, we have a sequester, and they're looking at, they're looking at social security. One of my neighbors has 20 cents a week left over after her insurance premium increase, and they wanna change down, chain down the CPI and so forth. 20 cents a week, I mean, that's mighty generous of them, you know? So unless you want your mother-in-law dropped off on your front doorstep someday by a couple orderlies, you better think about it, even young and old. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening.
Your name?
Oh, my name is Lee Morgan. I generally forget to say that all the time.
Well, we all, we all know, but so that the people at home, just in case you get new viewers.
Oh, okay. You know, listening to prior speakers, you know, speak about the state of the city, I think it's important to realize that what's really happened here is so many voters have walked away from the polls, and so many voters vote without knowing what they're voting for, that I'm not surprised that we find ourselves where we are. My opinion is that, you know, people need to really be informed before they make a I don't think the city is that much different than the county, or the state, or the federal government, but the federal government is the luck But the federal government is the lucky party because they can print money. With that said, I'd like to say, and I don't know if Mr. Rogan is allowed to respond or not, but Mr. Rogan, from what I've been led to believe, and I could be wrong, but I believe I read in the newspaper that you're for a partial privatization of DPW.
Do you want me to respond now?
Sure.
Sure. I think something has to be done in our Department of Public Works to save money. I would prefer not to privatize and collect garbage in four days and have a fifth day for maintenance and repairs. If that can't be negotiated, then privatization is an option.
Okay. Now, I don't, I don't retract last week's statement in regards to the city's unions picking bad candidates and backing bad candidates for public office. I think that's taken us the wrong way. But I would like to say something about privatization. Now, I don't know if you know anything about Carbondale, but they privatize their trash collection. And I'm just curious what you believe a living wage to be, because their drivers make $11, and the people putting the garbage in the back of the truck make minimum wage. And I just think that communities can't balance their budgets on the back of the people who work in their cities. I don't see a big difference between myself and any employee in this city, because we all go to work to do one thing, to earn a living, and do the best job we can possibly do when we're at work. And I just think that we keep listening to the federal government and government on every, every level, saying that the solutions to our problems are that we've got to privatize and, well, we can't run, like the governor said, we can't run the lottery now, and they want to sell the liquor stores. And, well, in the end, the people aren't going to have anything except massive debt, no assets, and the company's going to own everything. This country's in really bad shape. We have a lack of leadership in the unions because too many times they go off on tangents that are very destructive. But when you listen to what's taking place in the federal government in regards to trade, in regards to Western Pennsylvania, and in regards to our natural gas boom, I mean, they're saying that we've got to keep Chinese people working, making products for us because they work so cheap. And I just think that if we keep going to the lowest prom denominator, we're going to have a society of people that just make no wages, and we're going to become a two-class society with no, no blue collar middle class, just the serfs and the leaders. And I mean, when, you know, you sit here, you listen to people discuss issues, and everybody's afraid of the word bankruptcy. But when you go and you talk to the people who live in the city, they can't pay anymore. So what's the solution? We're talking about the parking garages. I talked to Mr. Scopoletti about the condition of the parking garages. The people he had working for him were doing all they could with their limited abilities. Everybody knew where the parking authority was. And I'm just saying that, you know, maybe it's time for the voters to wake up. Because you can just see the way things are taking place here. Look at the investigation by the FBI, the court system. They're going after the assistant, court administrator, and the guardian. No judges. I think, Ozzy brought up about an investigation by the district attorney. I think the FBI needs to go in and investigate the district attorney and the things he does, okay? Because I wouldn't ask the district attorney to do an investigation for me, because I'm fairly versed in his office, and I have no faith in him or his office. I've been out here a long time. I've studied a lot of things, and I've paid a lot of attention. And I just am very troubled by where we find ourselves. But I think that, I don't know whether residents of this city are going to get the money to meet the city's debts, but it's not a big secret where we find ourselves, because for over 20 years, something could have been done, and it wasn't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. Welcome back, Mrs. Evans. I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
A couple weeks ago on The View, even Langora was on as a guest. And they were asking her if she was going to run for office, because she was a big supporter of President Obama. She helped with his campaign. And she said the following. "The most power is with the citizen. With everyone who is not a politician, you can affect policy." Which brings me to my point. I believe it's every person's right to come in front of city council or wherever else they may be able to speak and voice their opinion about people that are running for office, any office, whether it be in Scranton, city council, school board, whatever, mayor, and express how they feel and shed some light on what they know, or what they feel they know, and about the candidates that are running. Now, a couple weeks ago, I came here and I spoke about Bill Cartwright and some of the things he was doing in his campaign for mayor. And Mr. Joyce, I spoke with you later, and you told me that you felt it was okay that I, I said what I said after you thought about it. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And I just wanted to make it clear that a person does have a right to come to this podium and say what they choose about a candidate, because I think it's very important that the people in the city know the qualities, the character of the people that are going to be running this city. So I definitely think, speaking about someone running for office, it's very much city business. I mean, they're going to be handling all our finances. They're the ones that are going to raise our taxes. They're the ones that are going to pass the buck on to us. I think it's very imperative that we know everything we can about these people. And I share some of my views, and just like everybody has a right to come and express their views. But I think it's important that the electorate is informed. Give you an example. Maybe people didn't see this, but I saw it, and it never left my mind. Couple months ago, Gary Lewis spoke. And while he was at the podium, he really lost it. He started banging things around. He was really out of control. And all I could think of is, and this is the man that's running for mayor? And what I'm, another thing I'm not really crazy about, I'm not crazy about some people who never come to council ever, but when they run for office, they all of a sudden show up and they speak. Now, Doug Miller's been coming to council for years, so his interest is in the city. Well, if Gary Lewis comes all of a sudden, now we find out he's running for mayor. So, well, there's why, there's the agenda. This is what I'm speaking about. People have to know. And I'm looking forward to checking into the voting record of Bill Cartwright to express what he voted for. I could give you another thing he voted for. There was a loan for $35 million that Mr. Doherty wanted, Mayor Doherty wanted. Billy voted for it. That's just one of many loans that Bill Cartwright voted for that we, the taxpayers, have to pay. People don't realize this about him. And I think it's very important to know. And I'm going to check into the voting record, and I'm going to come back to council and say it, whatever it is, about anybody. Mr. Rogan, if I agree with you, I'll say. If I don't, I won't. Just, this is an example. And Mr. Joyce, you, for example, I think you're brilliant. I think this city would be the, the best financial position with you as tax collector. And they couldn't ask for a more brilliant man. And that's all I have to say. I just wanted to make it clear that people do have a right to come here. And I know you don't like half the stuff that people say, but I do believe you feel they have a right to say it. Am I not right? Mrs. Evans, how do you feel about that?
Now, I, I would agree with that. There are many, many statements that have been made from that podium with which I do not agree. Many that I, I knew to be quite misleading. But on the other hand, everyone has a First Amendment right to free speech, and every human being should be respected. And as long as the individual is not threatening violence, inciting violence, or using obscene, inappropriate language, they have the right to speak at that podium, whether we agree with them or not, whether we like it or not. But they deserve the respect of our listening.
Thank you very much, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mrs. Craig?
Fifth order, five-day motions.
Councilor?
Yes.
Do you have any comments or motions tonight?
Thank you. Just picking up where I left off on the loan portfolio over the last few weeks. I'll address the, the loans that are currently in litigation. And as I mentioned numerous times, this amount totals over $2 million of taxpayer dollars. So I'll read off, these are all currently in litigation. We have Danielle &amp; Company for $25,000. Fitness 53 Incorporated for $25,000. Gleason Custom Kitchens for $50,000. Impanima Grill, $40,000. Paul M. Nardone, DBA outrageous, $65,000. Scranton Downtown LLC, $143,000. Actually, I apologize. That one is not in litigation. That one is open. Whistles, $64,634.13. Paperless Practice Incorporated, $250,000. Cartango Wine Families LLC, $35,000. Vita Tappus Bar and Grill, $120,000. Cachet Supris Limited, $60,000. Everest Furniture, $110,000. 408 Cedar LLC, $250,000. Castle Deli Outlet LLC, $25,000. And the biggest of all loans in the entire portfolio, I think everyone knows what one this is, Molly Brannigan's Scranton Irish Pubs, $650,000 of taxpayer dollars. So that is the list of all loans listed on the portfolio that are satisfied, opened, and in litigation. And since I finished with Molly Brannigan's, I do want to once again bring up the parade. It was brought to my attention that there are two bars in the city that have been closed for quite some time that the city might be allowing them to open specifically for Parade Day. Now, obviously, for a business owner downtown, Parade Day is probably one of their most profitable days of the year, and I certainly wouldn't want to hurt a business owner. But with these two businesses that they may be opening, I do have some questions. Are they approved by the liquor control boards? Are still an active liquor license? Will they be paying mercantile tax to the city on those sales? Will all proper procedure be followed? And I really do think it would be unfair for the city to allow businesses to practice, to open for a day or two while you have businesses in the downtown that are open to serve the residents of Scranton 365 days a year, or five days a week at least. And then to allow two other businesses just open for, for one day, it does seem a little bit unfair. Also on the parade, a couple residents sent me messages today asking what the cost of the parade is to the taxpayers, and also if the city will be sending any portion of a bill to the parade committee. So I will send those in to you, Nancy, when, once I get those typed up. So that's obviously an issue, and I'm a supporter of the parade. I think it does bring business into the city as long as everything is maintained. But it is a strain on the downtown, obviously, with added police and blocking off the roads. So I hope, once again, that it will be a very safe and enjoyable festivity. Two other issues that I wanted to bring up. One that is a good issue, and, you know, a positive story, and one that is very saddening. I was contacted by a residence in Pine Brook during the week, and there was a missing person in the neighborhood. They contacted myself, Chief Graziano, and dispatcher, and I know I'm pronouncing this name wrong, Lucio, from the Pennsylvania State Police. And the man who lives in Pine Brook wandered and walked all the way up, up two counties away, in Honesdale, or one county away, up in Honesdale, which, I'm in my twenties, I don't know if I could make that walk. And through the hard work of the Pennsylvania State Police and Chief Graziano and everyone involved, the man was found and returned home safely. So that's a very, very good story, and, and they deserve a job well done for, for that. And finally, I would just hope that everyone would keep in their prayers on the two prison guards at the federal prison. One who was stabbed by an inmate, and one who actually committed suicide following that. It's a terrible situation that happened, and hopefully the justice system will prevail for the person that committed this terrible act. So I hope everyone keeps them in their prayers. And that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Rogan, I was thinking, as you were speaking about the parade and the costs involved, very likely, the greatest costs would be those incurred through DPW services.
Cleanup as well.
Yeah, tremendous cleanup. And it would seem that perhaps the businesses who, you know, enjoy a great financial boost that day, might consider contributing to the cost of the DPW overtime cleanup that occurs on Sunday. And, you know, I know that this wouldn't apply to every business, but I, I think, you know, the restaurants, the bars, et cetera, there, there's an inordinate amount of work that goes on afterwards. And that's the taxpayers absorbing those costs.
Absolutely.
And it would be very nice if the businesses would be helpful in, in sharing those costs. So if you, if you want to include that.
Absolutely. I'm going to type everything up, and I'll send that in tomorrow morning.
Thank you. And Councilman Loscom, do you have any comments or motions tonight?
I'll pass on comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Joyce, comments or motions?
Yes, I'm going to be rather brief tonight. Scranton City Council has received information from the Single Tax Office regarding funds distributed to the city as of the end of February. In regard to current real estate tax collections, the Single Tax Office had collected and distributed $4,893,392.08 to the city. During the same period last year, the office had collected and distributed $3,760,304.08. This is an overall increase of $1,133,088, or a 30.13 percent increase in current real estate tax collections. Along with current real estate taxes, the Single Tax Office also collects prior-year delinquent real estate taxes. As of the end of February, the Single Tax Office collected and distributed $72,072.35. In the prior year, delinquent real estate taxes to the city, oh, during the same period last year, the office had collected and distributed $112,351.95. This is an, this is an overall decrease of $40,279.60. In addition, the Single Tax Office also collects local service tax. As of the end of February, the Single Tax Office collected and distributed $367,399.47 in LST revenue to the city. During the same period last year, the office had collected and distributed $391,380.11. This is an overall decrease of $23,980.64. Finally, the Tax Office collects the business privilege and mercantile taxes. As of the end of February, the office collected and distributed $32,231.31 in business privilege and mercantile tax revenue to the city. During the same period last year, the Single Tax Office had collected and distributed This is an overall increase of $12,204.96. In other news tonight, Northeast Revenue has submitted two reports to Scranton City Council. One report concerns delinquent refuse fees, and the other report concerns delinquent real estate taxes. Both reports provide data for the period beginning on February 1st and ending on February 28th. In regard to delinquent-- In regard to delinquent refuse fees, Northeast Revenue had collected and distributed $23,390.90 in delinquent refuse fees, and they also collected $17,920.26 in interest associated with those fees. This amounts to a grand total of $41,221.16 in delinquent refuse fees and interest collected and distributed. As one knows, Northeast Revenue collects and distributes delinquent real estate taxes, with the exception of the prior year, which is handled by the Single Tax Office. During the month of February, Northeast Revenue collected and distributed $53,856.77 in delinquent real estate taxes. I do have a few citizens' requests tonight. First is concerning the 100 and 200 block of North Everett Avenue. Various residents living on the 100 and 200 block of North Everett Avenue have contacted me regarding the condition of their road. Upon visiting these blocks, it can be seen that there are numerous potholes in both blocks scattered throughout the street, which are making travel conditions very difficult for residents. Mrs. Craig, please contact Director Dewar, inform him about the situation, and ask him to handle the situation promptly. As per Mr. Miller's request during the meeting earlier, there are large potholes on the Harrison Avenue Bridge. If we could please add that to the issues to contact Director Dewar about. And as per Mr. Spindler's request, please contact Mr. Dewar and inform him that the street sign on the corner of Price Street and North Lincoln is faded and needs replacement. And finally, with the Parade Day in Scranton coming up this Saturday, I'd like to remind all patrons of the parade to be safe. Don't drink and drive, and if you do drink at the parade, please invest in a taxicab for a ride home, and ensure safety to all the patrons of the parade. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. I wish to apologize for my absence from the last two city council meetings because of illness. I've never taken my duties and responsibilities lightly, and as a result, I continued my work from home because the job of a president is more demanding and extensive than what occurs on Thursday evenings. Also, I'd like to sincerely thank everyone who sent Get Well cards and flowers. Your good wishes and support were deeply appreciated and inspired me to keep on top of the people's work. I have only a few issues to briefly discuss tonight. First, Mrs. Craig, please send a letter to the mayor and the BA requesting a date when the RFP for Parking Meter Management will be advertised, and a response honored before March 12th, 2013. I had expected the management to be advertised for bids two weeks ago, and spoke to the mayor about such again last week. In addition, city council strongly recommends that the Parking Meter Enhancement Program is rebid, particularly in light of the fact that the last bid occurred in 2012 and no contract was awarded. Council prefers that meter resetting or zeroing out at time expiration is included in the bid specs. Second, Mrs. Craig, please send a letter to the Griffin Pond Animal Shelter requesting responses to questions and related data regarding the number of animals delivered by the city's animal control officer and associated costs. I'll provide the questions and related information to our office following tonight's meeting. Third, please schedule a meeting with Mr. Seitzinger and Pine Brook Neighborhood Association Officers in council's office ASAP, Mrs. Craig, to settle rooming house inspections in Pine Brook. Although I spoke with Mr. Seitzinger on February 14th regarding this issue, it appears that he has assigned neither an inspector nor an inspection date. However, in response to questions regarding garbage fees for properties in Pine Brook that were posed by the Neighborhood Association Officers, there are two garbage fees, and both were paid timely in 2012. Finally, I received a response from Civil Crossroads Consulting Engineers regarding Lake Scranton Road residential concerns, which recommends that four actions are taken at a total cost of $9,800. In addition, any tasks outside the scope of work, for example, meetings, cost estimates, bid packaging, et cetera, will be billed in accordance with the 2013 fee schedule of Civil Crossroads Consulting Engineers, in which hourly rates range from $30 to $75. Now, if my colleagues agree, I will direct Solicitor Hughes to draft appropriate legislation to provide funding from the U-DAG account for payment to Civil Crossroads to perform its recommendations. Since the administration has refused to post signage in compliance with the legally and lawfully adopted ordinance of 2012, it clearly would not draft such legislation. If the residents are to be represented and their quality of life protected, then council should pursue its own legislation and prepare to override a mayoral veto of such in the future. And that's it.
5B, granting a special encroachment permit to Regional Hospital of Scranton of 700 Jefferson Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, for the installation of a canopy extending from the applicant's building 21 feet 0 inches, subject to conditions.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C, establishing nine on-street parking spaces in the 700 block of Jefferson Avenue from the intersection of Jefferson and Pine Street, north along Jefferson Avenue, through and including the intersection of Jefferson Avenue and Gibson Street in the city of Scranton, and repealing inconsistent ordinances.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D, approving the financing by the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority of certain capital projects for the benefit of Community Life Support Systems Incorporated, a Pennsylvania not-for-profit corporation, declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city of Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, and the area served by Community Life Support Systems Incorporated, to have the projects provided by and financed through the authority. Designating the mayor of the city, or in his absence, the president or vice president of the city council, as the person to act on behalf of the city council, as the applicable elected representative within the meaning of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended. Authorizing such mayor of the city, or the president or vice president of the city council of the city, to take certain actions on behalf of the city council of the city as such applicable elected representative, and authorizing other necessary and appropriate action.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Abstract Enterprises Incorporated, 628 Spruce Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18503, to provide real estate title searches for approximately 20 to 60 properties scheduled for demolition of hazardous structures through Scranton's Office of Economic and Community Development Department.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? I just wanted to add that this contract was put out to bid, and the selection made was the lowest responsible bidder. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, File of Council Number 8, 2013, establishing a no parking zone along the easterly side of Wyoming Avenue, State Route 3025, from Segment 30, Offset 2190, to Segment 30, Offset 2410, and along the southerly curb line of Large Street, 175 feet east from its intersection with Wyoming Avenue, to allow for safe sight distances for a proposed McDonald's restaurant at Wyoming Avenue and Large Street.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lascom?
Yes.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 8, 2013, accepting a donation of $100 from Anthracite Heritage Museum and Iron Furnaces Association, presented to the City of Scranton Fire Department.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lascom?
Yes.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted. Mrs. Craig, before we adjourn, if we can contact someone in the maintenance department...
I think I know what you're going to say, Mrs. Evans. It's funny that you mentioned that I was actually in the mayor's office to sign contracts two days ago, and I asked the mayor's secretary, Stephanie, to leave a note for the mayor that five of our lights were out, and our meetings are in the evenings, and it's very dark. I also noticed last week after the meeting, the emergency lighting was out. So, Mark Seitzinger had told me that was possibly due to a, you know, maybe just a fuse. So, that's okay. We'll know tonight on our way out. But he told me in here that he was waiting to find a lift. So, I expressed my sentiments to the mayor's secretary that I don't think it's all that hard to find a lift, or I'm sure we could use scaffolding, or there's also poles you can use. So, if you'd like, though, I had the same thought as you. I'll definitely mention it again.
Yes, please, tomorrow, and then, you know, if need be, I'll call the mayor and tell him myself, because, you know, this is really inexcusable. If there's no further...
Madam President, if I could, just one issue that came up about Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority tonight.
Yes.
On Item 5D, which is approving the, or at least the ordinance for the financing by Community Life Support Systems by the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority. If you would look at Section 3 of the ordinance, it states, "The approval granted hereby shall not in any way pledge or obligate the creditor taxing power of the city, nor shall the city be liable for the payment of the principal of or interest on any obligation issued by the authority in connection with the 2013 project." So, that issue came up with the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority. At least as to this issue, there's no guarantee.
Yes.
It's just my general understanding that the city does not guarantee any obligations of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority. But at least on this issue tonight, on this ordinance, it specifically states that the city of Scranton has no obligation.
Thank you.
Okay? There's no guarantee of the city of this financial obligation.
Thank you. That validates what I said earlier. And if there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Lawson, to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.